Really? Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Um.
Okay.
Um. Really?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Um.
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 Okay.
Drive safe.
Um. Before we get into the agenda review, were there any announcements or any like upcoming things we wanted to just make sure everyone's aware of?
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, the fire department, uh, annual, the award banquet is Thursday. I think most of you have signed up. It's at Union Station at the Browning Theater. That's March fourteenth. Um, and then we have, uh, Linda Lartiga runs the PATH program. It's a way to get to citizenship and they're having a graduation on April third and, and they've invited council members to attend that. That's a Wednesday as well. Um, and I put on, uh, here to vote for twenty-fifth street for best main street, but I think I'm sure that Sarah will talk to you about that. And then we did have one question, and this is for you, Sean and Dave. We wondered if you would want to switch with somebody on this side so that you have a seasoned council member. It's just a suggestion or a thought. If, if you, you're welcome to stay where you are. Um, just a, a thought. If you're interested, let, let us know. So. I think that's all I have.
Awesome. Yeah, that way you can lean over and get the scuttlebutt of whatever's, you know, whatever's good. So, all right. Uh, let's jump to our agenda review for the special city council and the redevelopment agency meetings. Uh, as we review that, if there's any questions or need any discussion items, uh, we'll have the approval of minutes. Hopefully you've had, all had a chance to review the minutes. Um, and then we have our consent items, uh, the planning commission appointment. Andre Akhmadov, is that right? Akhmadov? Uh, board of zoning adjustment appointments, Judy Els- Elsie and Elsie? Elsley and the appoint, put the glasses on, the appointment of Lance Evans to the board of zoning as well. Diversity Commission appointments, reappointment of Juan Carlos, uh, Santos, Santos, David, Santa Esteban? And Monica Gill and the appointment of Amir Jackson and Lucia Madrigal. And then the Weber area dispatch nine, nine-one-one and emergency services district appointment consideration of Mayor Nedolski to the Weber area dispatch nine-one-one and emergency services district. Any discussion on the consent items at this point?
Yeah, I don't have a.
Oh, Vice Chair White.
Maybe this is something that, um, Rich is gonna say, but, uh, we used to get a heat map of where these people came from and, and where, where they represent, what area they represent. Did we do that any longer?
We did get the heat map with the original, uh, uh, packet. It's just not in the, in the council packet, but, but my, my question was gonna be, I don't know if that was all your question. I, and I, maybe I shouldn't have been the one answering it either, Marsha.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Um, I, as, as I've continued to have this, and you, you guys have all heard me whine about this, um, we continue, if you look at the cluster, there's, there is pretty much District Four is well represented in everything. Um, and sometimes a little bit of the eastern part of District Three. Um, but I, I, I kinda think that we can do better. Um, I, I think that what's happening is that, uh, these, when these appointments come open, um, the people that are already on that board or commission, you know, they bump their friends, they, hey, apply for this thing. And I, so I think that's why we continue to be clustered. Where if we perhaps put a, a, a policy or a, uh, in place to where we kinda did it like we do the city council, only half the members of one of those boards could be in one district. And the rest had to be spread out somehow. That might be a better approach. It might give administration some opportunity to, to say, well, yeah, we gotta, we gotta quit clustering all these, these things up. Um, and that's, I think I sent a reply that all of you got when I, when I first got, uh, one of these. Um, that, that's why it, it has nothing to do with anybody that's been, uh, recommended other than where they live. And I, so I, for that reason, I, I'm gonna have a hard time of voting, uh, yes on some of these.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I, I do appreciate that, um, thought too. I also, I mean, the districts are, they're so big, you know, so I think that's also a challenge. I like the idea of how it represents throughout the city. I don't know if the district is the best way to look at it, but.
Well, maybe not, but, but if you look at the clusters, you know, look at those heat maps, they're all clustered. And you, you know, so i- if, if you're trying to represent the views of the city, you know, there, there are diverse views throughout the city that, that don't get represented because we, we just cluster our, our appointments.
For sure. And I guess what I'm saying, I'm just referencing the one for the planning commission right now.
One question I got no issue with, quite frankly. That's the only one I don't.
Well, they're all also clustered.
They're clustered, but not nearly as bad.
Yeah, 'cause he lives downtown at least, 'cause we have no one downtown.
Right. Yeah.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's an application process, right? So we, we are sort of limited on who applies. So maybe there's a different way of maybe getting the word out on, on who could apply. Um, I'm not sure. Maybe there's more discussion on that.
Or links, it's open for, you know, don't feel certainty for much.
When, when we made this issue with the trails committee, um, they figured out how to get somebody from the.
From the north side, yeah.
Yeah. I, I think it's just, it's just very easy to not worry about it if we don't require it.
I think the other thing is, I know Linda reached out to me on the diversity commission and just wondered if there was anybody in my area, 'cause we hadn't, didn't have that. And so, um, that might be another opportunity as we look at these committees. If we look around and say, who are some qualified people? And we could make those recommendations and might bolster those applications so that, you know, there's that striking the balance of having an active working committee and, and feeling that need, you know, there's gotta be something there. So. So, okay. All right. I guess, I don't know if there's anything else we need to go on that other than, I mean, I, I agree with you. I think we need better representation. Just.
I think we can look at, at who's active in the city in other ways. Like, for instance, if you're looking for a planning commissioner, well, who's, who's been, uh, applying for permits? Who's been, you know, you can look and see who's been at the counter for, for whatever reason. And, uh, you know, and make an assessment that way. I know that that's the way some commissioners have been chosen in the past is because they've been a little bit of a thorn in the side of the city because they had a, had an opinion about something. And, and it made it, uh, they made themselves, uh, known that they were interested and would, you know, would volunteer. So I, I think there's, I think we just gotta be creative. I, I think there's ways to do this.
Sounds good. Okay. Um, well, we'll, we'll consider the consent items in the meeting and then, uh, onto the public hearing for the proposed, proposed street renaming of fifteen hundred west to thirty-three, thirty, thirty south. And that'll be presented by Barton, our planning manager. Um, we've looked at that a couple of times here. Also, report from planning commission Barton will talk to us about a proposed rezon on three thirty-five seventh street. Uh, that is a, we'll, we'll receive public input on that item as well. It's not a, it's not a public hearing necessarily, but we will receive public input on that one. And then, uh, Steve will come and share the, uh, communication plan for the proposed, uh, partial street vacation of, at Cahoon Street. And so we'll, we'll figure out where we're going from here on that one. Um, public comments. Comments from mayor and, and council members, and we'll adjourn in, and then begin our redevelopment agency meeting. We'll have some, uh, one set of minutes there. Councilmember Chair Wurka, you've got those. And then, uh, report from Jared Johnson on our redevelopment agency fiscal year twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three report. Any questions or comments on that or discussion at this point? All righty. Look forward to what, what that's gonna be here. So, okay. Um, we will invite Sarah. We're grateful that she was able to join us today and, um, you know, after the legislative session and everything else that she was doing battling for us down there. Thank you for coming and, uh, we'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you. Well, thank you for your understanding and my, uh, absence of the last scheduled appearance. It was a wild and woolly day to legislature, and so I appreciate your, uh, patience with that and you're allowing me to reschedule to be here. We did, uh, come out ahead on that discussion we were dealing with down there. So it was a good thing. So I appreciate it. Are you ready? Okay. Awesome. Thank you. So I'm gonna go back up to the starting page for a second. Um, just to reference, so as we do these annual reports every year, I just like to remind everyone that we operate on a calendar year. So this is a little bit delayed information as we present it to you. But we do present our annual report and our strategic, the following year strategic plan to our board each year at the end of the year. And so that full report, if anyone is interested, can be accessed through the QR code here or is linked in the meeting materials for tonight. But I'm gonna focus on the annual report portion, um, just due to time constraints and give you a wrap up of, of how things looked last year. So I like to start because a lot of people don't really understand, um, what a destination organization does for a community. And, you know, our role used to be just about bringing more and more visitors into the community, but that's really no longer the focus of what we do. It's one element, but as we know, every community must compete with every other community for its share of the world's attention, resources, customers and investment. And to compete, people need to know about our community, um, have a positive impression of our community and want to visit here to experience it and meet our people and experience our places. So we achieve this by clearly developing, articulating and managing our brand. We have to engage in efforts to promote market, sell and engage with those potential visitors. And all of this has to be reinforced over and over and over and over again. We don't just get to tell people once and have them remember. So we, um, Visit Ogden as a destination organization is uniquely positioned to do this and address the need for our destination promotion and recognize that it's for the benefit and well-being of everyone in our community. Destinations International, our international trade organization is created this graph and the point is, is that it's a common good. The visitor economy in our communities is a common good for everyone. It's an essential investment in developing the opportunities and building the quality of life benefits that, that benefit all residents of our community. As an industry, we tend to point to the number of jobs that are created, the local spending that takes place, how much local tax revenue is generated, and how much economic activity takes place within a community. These KPIs are really only relevant to our community because they drive reinvestment into the community that then creates additional assets and amenities that are good for everyone. So like everyone, we have access to an awful lot of data these days and we wanna make sure that all of our decisions are data driven. So just to give you a high level overview of some of the types of data we're evaluating as we decide who to target, where to market, how to approach ourselves efforts. Um, as we look at the economic data, this is for Weber County overall and not just Ogden City, and it's provided to us by the Kim Gardner Policy Institute. Their data comes in about a year behind schedule. So this is representative of twenty twenty-two data. Um, but visitors spent four hundred and sixty million dollars in our community in twenty twenty-two, generating fifty-six point nine million dollars in local direct tax revenue. And I will say, as you'll see these future graphs, twenty twenty-three was a year that ended higher than twenty twenty-two. So we'll see those numbers increase for next year. But our overall sales tax collections increased from nine point three percent of the visitor makeup of that was increased from nine point three percent to ten point one percent of overall sales tax revenue. So as we saw local spending decrease a little bit with the economy, we saw visitors make up that difference and still continue to increase their spend here. These numbers I did update from the plan. If anyone's, uh, looking at the full plan to reflect year-end numbers. But we know that visitors spend their dollars in a number of ways. And you can see that in Weber County, about twenty-five percent of the total spend came from our visitors. One of the other things we try to indicate is, sorry, my spacing turned off on there, but, um, is that, you know, we used to talk about, and I will talk about it in future slides, hotel occupancies and ADRs. But as we speak to our residents, a lot of residents frankly don't care what our occupancies are in our hotels. It doesn't impact their daily life. So as we look to ease to communicate the value of the visitor economy to each of us who lives here, things like our restaurants, you know, we all appreciate our number of local and independent restaurants that we get to experience in this community and the unique, um, value they add. And so if we take a look at last year, thirty-one percent, thirty-one percent of the restaurant spend came from our visitors. So I'm guessing if we would go to any of our restaurant partners in this community and ask them if they could do without thirty percent of their sales, they would tell you that their business models would look very different. So recognizing that we have these amenities and assets in our community that the visitors spend helps curate and sustain over time.
Good.
Of course.
Um, about the, about the, the nights in hotels. Um, I guess I don't really understand why that wouldn't matter to people.
Well, I think if you're just thinking as our point being if, if I'm an Ogden City resident and I am, I'm not really thinking about what visitors do in my community, right? And so I don't really, it doesn't impact me if a hotel's full or if there's occupancy available. But it does impact me if we only have two restaurants downtown instead of twelve or whatever those numbers are, right? And so just trying to correlate how the visitor economy benefits residents in a way that makes sense and is tangible to them, because a lot of what we've been hearing since COVID is the negative side of visitors and, you know, whether it's more people on our trails or at the reservoir or at the ski resorts. Um, and so we're trying to ensure that our residents have an understanding of the positive value, not only that economic investment and spend that comes in the community, but ways that it enhances our quality of life experiences as well.
Okay. Uh, oh, you've guarded up. Thank you.
Great. So of course, our focus at Visit Ogden, one of our primary focuses is these tourism tax collections. And we, this is the TRCCA Tourism, Recreation, Culture Convention and Airports Tax. Um, here in Weber County, it is made up of the transient room tax, the restaurant tax and the leased vehicle tax. So twenty twenty-two was a record-breaking year. We finished almost sixteen percent higher than twenty twenty-one, which had previously been our highest year on record. And then we finished twenty twenty-three even stronger at an additional six point eight percent increase. As we looked around this, uh, state and the region and even nationally, we started to see trends decline. Um, we anticipate that, and we've seen this this first quarter of this year, a flattening of that demand. If you look at these really heightened elevated demands coming out of COVID, there was a term called revenge travel that I'm sure many of you heard, where people were mad that they'd been cooped up for so long and wanted to take as many vacations as possible. And we saw elevated travel during those periods. So when we start reporting, I'm trying to remind all of our stakeholders consistently that as we see these trend lines start to flatten a little bit, they're still super elevated over what's considered the baseline year of twenty nineteen. So things are still going really well. It's just normalizing a bit more now. So as we look at twenty twenty-three, Ogden City finished just shy of three hundred thousand dollars in transient room tax collections, which was a six point seven percent increase over twenty-two. But that is over and above the twenty-five and a half percent increase Ogden City gained from twenty-one to twenty-two. So you can see these really exaggerated increases. Um, our hotels revenue in Ogden City was up six point seven percent to nearly twenty-two million dollars last year, even though our occupancy fell about two percent because our average daily rates had increased about nine percent. And if we look at short-term rentals, the number of available listings had increased three point seven percent in Ogden City from five hundred and ninety-six at the end of twenty twenty-two to six hundred and eighteen at the end of twenty twenty-three. And again, these numbers vary day to day. But their booked listings wound up increasing by eleven percent. Our occupancy in our short-term rentals was down five point six percent. Our rev, our average daily rates was flat, but revenue wound up twelve point eight percent higher than the previous year because of all of those additional units that were on the market. So we also look at our visitor profile data. We look at demographic information, our top origin markets, our top spending markets, overnight versus day trips, visitor to resident ratios and length of stay information. This chart on the left is kind of an aggregate of our top ten out-of-state visitor markets, including the percent of our visitation they comprise, the percentage of spend and their average spend. So you can see with LA here, that was one of the reasons we were so excited about the breeze opportunity because of the direct correlation of visitation from that greater LA market. The Salt Lake DMA, which makes up, as you know, all of the state of Utah, as well as portions of Idaho and Wyoming, is our number one market with twenty point two percent of our visitors coming from that area and making up thirteen point one percent of our spend. So one other way that we're, uh, communicating to residents, the value of these, uh, visitor economy in this tourism spend is the state adds a point three two percent TRT on top of the county and municipal TRTs. This goes to fund the outdoor recreation grants throughout the state. Since since inception, seventeen projects that have, have been funded in Weber County through this grant process, so through these TRT collections. I just signed a letter today for another one for Ogden City, so hopefully we'll secure that as well. But these are additional projects that our, uh, residents are able to utilize. And then as we look at our scope of work that all this data goes into driving, um, we are guided by four strategic pillars. Economic impact, which is how we communicate our brand message through our work to secure leisure, business and group travel. Destination stewardship, which comprises our destination development, destination marketing and sustainability initiatives to work on the protection of our resources and quality of life. Advocacy in our community for our community, our industry, and obviously garnering the political support at the local, regional and state level. And then our team retention and development, because of course they are our best asset. Uh, we kicked off the season with the bang this year with some incredible PR coverage in Ski Magazine, ranking Powder Mountain and Snow Basin as number one and two respectfully, respectively, uh, resorts in the West. Um, I think most of us would agree that ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, we would never have guessed we would have been there. And I know as locals, a lot of us aren't super happy that they got this acknowledgement because we wanna keep these resorts and experiences for ourselves. But I think it's important to acknowledge the work and investment that went into these experiences that wouldn't have been met without both visitors and residents, uh, patronizing these resorts. And the work, you know, the acknowledgement to the teams at both mountains as this ranking came from a reader poll. So these were people that experienced our mountains, were on our mountains and then ranked them as the top in the nation. From a PR perspective, we tracked fifty-eight articles that we were involved in producing last year, highlighting ski opportunities, dark skies, unique lodging, uh, our numerous events, and of course, our affordability and friendliness as a community. From a marketing standpoint, um, that side of the economic impact, um, pillar, as we look at leisure travel, you can see a lot of detail in that online report about our always-on campaigns as well as our seasonal campaigns. But as we continue to try to drive awareness of our brand, we saw a thirty-six percent increase in our site-wide sessions. One of the things that's interesting about the work we do is we don't own anything. We don't sell any, we don't own a product that we sell. We sell a collective community, um, the product that a community develops. So while it's important for us to be able to present this collective vision to potential visitors, we also want to ensure that we're sending potential visitors to our partners and stakeholders who have the opportunity to make a conversion into actual booked business. So we focus a lot on sending people off of our website to our partners and we saw sixteen percent increase in these outbound partner clicks to just under ninety thousand clicks. Um, our winter campaign drove more than seventeen million impressions through our digital and social channels. And then as we moved into spring, just a reminder, we had a phenomenal winter last year that really drew a lot of eyeballs. But, um, and then as we moved into spring, because of all of that snow, we actually changed our campaigns and focused primarily on in-market visitors and, and residents and, um, encouraging them to recreate responsibly around our high water runoff as well as not utilizing the trails when they were muddy or could be damaged from their use. We also, um, ran one of our most successful summer campaigns last year in terms of reach engagement in our website, KPIs. Uh, we do spend more money on our winter marketing because we have lower occupancies in our lodging in the winter. So trying to drive more visitation there. But in the summer, we started to see a bit of that decrease in our lodging occupancy. So we launched a specific lodging campaign, driving visitors to our lodging pages, again, in order for them to convert So we launched a specific lodging campaign, driving visitors to our lodging pages, again, in order for them to convert, and drove about 20,000 links to our lodging partners. And then we also have an email newsletter strategy. We do send out a weekly newsletter to all of our stakeholders and partners, informing them of upcoming events so that they can both, like, community events and conferences and meetings so that they can staff up if they believe necessary or just be aware of that extra business in town. And then we have a quarterly newsletter that we distribute to Ogden's, to a potential visitor database, and increased our distribution there by about 75% this year as we, from beginning to end. So this is a video that I'm not going to play due to time, and there's another one at the end. But hopefully you'll go into the links in the meeting agenda and watch these because they're pretty awesome. We launched Ogden Eats this year, which was a transition from Ogden Restaurant Week. We decided to make it a month-long celebration of our local restaurants. Due to continual staffing challenges and food costs and different things, the traditional Restaurant Week model wasn't working for our restaurant partners anymore. So we decided to just engage in a highly-targeted marketing campaign to drive visitation into our local establishments during a very low business time for them during October. So we created 20 different videos and corresponding photo shoots for our restaurant partners to be able to use in their marketing materials that will also be integrated into our new website. And just really launched this campaign to drive awareness of Ogden as a culinary hub to the Wasatch Front. We saw more than 54,000 users, which was a 75% increase over last year's event. And then wanted to call out the group business side. We continue to see really great success in sports tourism. Huge thanks to Ogden City's Parks and Recs Department as they have helped us with Triple Crown and a number of other baseball and softball events that have surfaced because we host Triple Crown. The Fast Pitch World Series, we increased our number of teams from 55 last year in 2022 to 92 in 2023, and then hosted the Best of the West finale for the first time last year with 46 teams. And we'll be welcoming them back this year, and they're looking to sign a long-term contract to be in our community following that. We also celebrated the most successful year of the TCG Worldwide Review this last year, generating about $900,000 in revenue for the conference center. All in all, we hosted 35 groups with more than 31,000 attendees for a total community economic impact of $17.9 million. So OEC is undergoing a remodel, which will impact business that we're able to book this year, but we know will significantly increase our opportunity to book future business as they enhance their technology needs and the just visuals in the conference center. It is a little bit difficult, I will admit, to not be envious of some of the facilities our colleagues around the state are building. There are some pretty incredible sports facilities going up. But we know that Ogden as a community collaborates better than any other, and we will find ways to compete and still provide these opportunities for tournaments and other types of group events. But we also want to be realistic about these facilities coming online and what it will mean as we try to bring new business into the community. So we have, events are a key pillar of our marketing initiatives as well. And we obviously have a lot of incredible milestones we're reaching this year. You are well aware of the 100 Year Celebration of Union Station, Perry's Egyptian Theater. Film in Utah is celebrating 100 years as well. We'll be launching a film trail that will come through Ogden this summer. And then the Ice Sheets also has their 30-year anniversary this year. And then, of course, we're all waiting for the July announcement of the 2034 Winter Olympic Games. As we look at destination stewardship, in addition to our sustainability initiatives, which, actually, let me back up, I'm sorry. So on the left, in 2022, we completed a tourism sustainability assessment. We broke this into two pieces for budgetary reasons. And then we're hoping to complete our destination stewardship plan or sustainable tourism master plan last year, but wound up finding an opportunity to apply for an EDA grant that unfortunately took 14 months to come through. So we just got acknowledgement that we received that grant in January. So we've engaged in that effort now. The kickoff will begin in May, and we will actually create this sustainability plan. So guiding our efforts moving forward, that's an action-oriented implementable plan. But in addition to sustainability, our destination stewardship includes destination development and management. And so as we look at these pictures, we partnered with Ogden City's Economic Development Team and ODA to create a billboard on I-15 that was up all last summer, recognizing we are the only Wasatch Front community that you cannot see from the freeway and that UDOT won't allow us to put any kind of gateway signage on the freeway acknowledging how to access our amenities. So we tried to create our own through this partnership, which was awesome. We also formed a DEIA Community Coalition. Ogden City is participating with us in that, so we appreciate that support. Continued hidden disabilities training throughout the community, and hosted quarterly marketing and business trainings for our stakeholders and partners. We, the logo there on the bottom is, again, an effort to communicate with our residents the value of the visitor economy in our community. So we created this logo that we placed on anything that is funded by or supported by tourism tax dollars. So in Weber County, all of the Weber County public venues, like the Conference Center and the Golden Spike Event Center and the Ice Sheet, et cetera, et cetera, are funded by tourism tax dollars. So we put these decals on all of the doors so that hopefully, when you go in to support your local favorite nonprofit for their fundraiser, you see that you are in a building that is supported by tourism tax dollars, as well as Tourism Tax Advisory Board grants that are allocated. The recipients need to acknowledge Tourism Works logo in their marketing materials. And then finally advocacy, obviously advocating for our industry within our community and for our community within the state. Our involvement here is just really important to me. We have close alignment with our Utah Tourism Industry Association and the Utah Office of Tourism, and then all of the other various ordinances and just policies and different things we can work on to ensure a vibrant visitor economy in our state. So this is another video I hope you will go watch. But just to wrap up with a couple of highlights of where we are headed this year, I mentioned the Sustainable Tourism Master Plan. We are also currently evaluating 11 RFP responses for a new marketing firm for us. We will launch our new website and a brand refresh on April 11th. You'll all be getting an invitation to a little gathering we're having. We've increased our group sales efforts to meet the goals for revenue that the county has set, and will continue to work on our destination development, management, and stewardship initiatives, as well as just really focusing on creating this amazing community brand that hopefully are helping your community and economic development teams here in the city and the county because we know that anytime where we're looking to recruit a business or a potential, you know, workforce or retain a business or a developer or any of those things, it's the awareness of our community and what it has to offer is the first step in bringing them here. So we really appreciate Ogden City's support. We know our focus is on Weber County overall, but I really appreciate your acknowledgement of the role that Ogden City plays in that and your support of us in our efforts to make sure this county is the top destination of choice for the world.
Awesome. Does anybody on the council have any questions for Sarah or want to comment? Other than, thank you very much.
Oh, yes, I forgot. So, thank you. So we sent out yesterday, and I can forward, or did you forward that, Janine? Thank you. So we were recognized by USA Today as one of the finalists in their Main Streets of America award competition. So, but it's one of those that you have to vote for, so you can vote every day. But, so go in and vote every day, send it to all your loved ones and friends, and have them vote every day so we can beat Dave's Friend in Grand Junction and make sure we're recognized as, again, because we have been recognized in the past, but as having one of the greatest main streets in America. Because we know those accolades help us a lot in that recognition factor as well.
Chair, I just wanted to, you know, kind of give a, an atta girl, atta boy to Sarah. I've worked with Sarah across the street since I've been a council member. And, you know, I'm so impressed every year when you come and present your, what you've been doing, the way you think out of the, outside the box, the way you use data to help us to be more effective. You have done a fantastic job, and I really appreciate the work that you and your team do. And give that atta boy to them as well, so.
I will. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Councilmember Herr. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. And I would echo the same thing. I think there's a lot of great things happening here, and you guys helped shine the light on that, so. And up next, we have Barton Brearley, our planning manager, to come talk about a proposed local historic district, or two different proposed local historic districts.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Yeah, and before you jump, let me just really quickly ask Councilmember White, or Vice Chair White, if you had any comments. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, yeah.
No, no, I'm, I'm good. Sarah, you made it, you made it to the meeting. I haven't made it there yet.
You're here, virtually.
Yeah.
The voice in the sky. Is there something else? Okay. Oh, it's just one. I'm sorry.
There are two. There are two, but we'll do the next one.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So this was a petition from Travis Pate to place a block on the local register of historic places. There, okay. So the area proposed would be the block between 25th and 26th and Adams and Jefferson. As you can see, there's an overlapping request from Allen Toon that we'll be talking about next week. So just to give you some information, there, these properties are actually already on the National Historic District. The Central Bench Historic District, the central area, is a National Historic District. The Jefferson Avenue properties are in the local register, but the rest of the block is not. And to give you some of the differences between it, the National Register is a designation by the United States Department of the Interior. Some of the things it gives, it gives a recognition. It's a recognized benefit to property owners to have their properties considered historic. The National also gives you some access to grand opportunities if you want to remodel or keep up your property, some tax incentives, and some technical assistance. And it does not restrict what property owners can do. So if you decide, hey, I just want to remodel it the way I want to remodel it. I don't want to have to follow any rules. You can do that. Now, you may disqualify yourselves from any grants, but you can do that. Whereas the local register, it does provide recognition. Property owners enjoy having that on there. In fact, I know we talked to some people who were excited about buying a home, and they were, they noted that, hey, we really like that it's on the local register. That was a real benefit to them. Does provide some technical assistance. I know our Landmarks Commission works with property owners. I know some have come two or three times to the Landmarks Commission and just on how do you install a door? How do you replace an old window or what kind of awning were period appropriate? So we do provide that. With the local register, you are required to have Landmarks Commission review any alterations and to review any new construction on the site. So essentially, the National Register is heavy on carrot and light on stick, and the local register is heavy on stick and light on carrot, so. The code does provide procedures for designating properties historic. And it says, "Any person, group, or association may nominate a prospective historic resource for form of designation." However, since the 1980s, it's been the city's policy to only process applications submitted by the property owner. There's, has been concern that having someone who's not the property owner designate it with that kind of carrot, heavier on the stick and lighter on the carrot, that that should be designated, that should be initiated by the property owner. So I think there's been one case where that hasn't been the case, that was actually initiated by the city. The rest, since about the 1980s, have been initiated by the property owners. Now, there is a state law about, it's called a citizen-led process to designate a historic district. That requires a third of the property owners to agree in writing, and it requires a property owner vote in which two-thirds vote in favor, and there's at least 50% turnout. It does allow council to designate it anyway, even if there's, they don't hit those numbers. However, this, our reading of it, this technically doesn't apply to Ogden, just the way our ordinance is written. I know the Landmarks Commission looked at this and they want to formulate a recommendation when we update the landmarks code on how we go through the historic designation process. And they were interested in this and maybe want to apply this sort of standard in the future.
Why doesn't it apply?
Because the, it says, just the way it's written, it says, "If you provide a process that allows citizens to apply and requires a vote, then you have to follow this process." Well, we don't require the vote, therefore, that process doesn't apply.
Interesting.
Yeah. I, it's like a lot of legislation that sometimes the words they put down on paper don't really accurately reflect what their intentions were, so that may have been the case. So the process is, so anyone can file a petition. And we get a petition, then the Landmarks Commission is supposed to do an investigation. Sorry, that's small. I'll read it. If they, if the commission decides they want to consider that designation, then they have to send notice to all the property owners by certified mail, and they hold a public meeting, and then they decide at that public meeting whether to approve it or not. Or if they decide that they don't want to consider that designation at a public meeting, then they can just forward that recommendation to the city council. In either case, the ordinance gives us 60 days to do that, which works fine when you have a property owner, you know, maybe it's grandma's property, and she's, she wants the property to be on the local register. And so, and they've got lots of family information, so they, that property owner files the application and goes through landmarks. That's fairly doable in 60 days. But when you have a citizen applying for an area that, where they're not the owner, and they just want to designate the larger area of the city, to do all the, the research and the property owner involvement, because if I'm a property owner, I want to know what is this? How does this affect me? Do I want to be, all those things. Doing all that in 60 days is just really a nonstarter. There's no way to do that practically within the 60 days required by code. So practically speaking, you're always going to get a landmarks recommendation of to not consider it this way. So when it comes to city council, you know, what your choices are, the ordinance doesn't really say you have to do anything. Says the Landmarks Commission has to give you their recommendation, but as far as we can tell, you don't have to take any action on it. I do think it'd be a good idea to put a bow somehow on what you did. But you could just sit it on and do nothing. You could go to have a council hearing and say, hey, let's have a hearing on it and either formally deny it that way or possibly adopt an ordinance and designate it historic. Or a third option is you could send it back to the Landmarks Commission and said, hey, do an investigation, take your time, here's the resources, here's the time, and, and make a recommendation on it. So in this case, this block has 34 different property owners. There's a variety of public and private and institutional owners. And we asked the petitioner, you know, do you have signatures from the property owners? Can you get us, you know, signatures of all 34 to consent to this? And, and we got zero property owner signatures on it. So the Landmarks Commission, their recommendation is to not approve the petition for the reasons that none of the 34 property owners have consented to it. And it's been the city policy that nominations should come from the property owner. You know, I wouldn't say that the, you know, if there were 30 out of 34, the Landmarks Commission might say, yeah, that's good enough, and might have recommended approval or maybe follow the state process. But certainly, zero out of 34 was just a nonstarter in this. The 60 days is far too short. I will say for another property area, we have the Maryland Drive area, which has a lot of history on it. We got a grant, a certified local government grant for $10,000. We did a, hired a historian to do a study in that area, a preliminary study. And then we just got announced that we received another grant for the following year for another $10,000 to actually go through the historic designation process. So we're planning on doing that over the, the next year. But, you know, really, two years and $20,000 process, which is not what we have in this case. We have 60 days and, and really, staff resources are not available for this work. We have this, we have the general. this, we have the general plan going on, we have the code update going on and a lot. So this is you know, we just don't have the capacity to add this project to our, to our list. And then just the general policy that, you know, you're, there's going to be a historic district that really should come through the Landmarks Commission as a recommendation rather than just a citizen. So we'll note that the Landmarks Commission has, is being proactive about historic preservation. They are very interested and they appreciate when citizens come to them with interest in historic preservation. I know they've expressed appreciation to Mr. Pate for his interest in historic preservation and his research. Those are those are good things. Some of the things that the Landmarks Commission wants to do, offer and promote incentives. Can we make that instead of add some more carrots to it? You know, they would like to come to you with a proposal, for example, to put some funding in for roof repairs. I think that's the highest priority. You have these historic buildings. The best thing to do is start at the top and, you know, we have some pretty shoddy roofs that these buildings are being destroyed because they have, can we, can we get some more carrots in there? They would like to come to you with a proposal. They'd like to increase community outreach and have more events and education. They do want to add properties to the historic register. Like I said, we got funding for the Maryland Drive area. So that's next on their priority. We have city-owned properties that aren't on the local register. That's probably the next thing on their list. This area could be on that list, but it was not the, the top priority for them. And note that they're participating in the general plan update and the landmarks ordinance update too. So for all those reasons, it's just our recommendation that, and the Landmarks Commission recommendation that you don't do this historic district designation as a result of this petition.
Questions for Barton from the council, Angela or council member, sorry?
That's okay. It's my name. Um, I was curious if you could go into further, if I don't, the petitioner could go into further, how they asked the property owners if they'd like to be part of it. So we know it's zero of 34 consented, but what was the outreach process?
Yeah, I don't know that there was any outreach. They, they might have some outreach, but I don't know.
Maybe ask the petitioner.
I'd love to give him three minutes to.
Yeah, Travis, would you mind joining us up here?
The norms say you need to respond to a question.
I know.
Right.
We might have to change the norms if we're not going to do that.
Primarily as far as outreach, I was asked, can you have us, when I had turned in the documentation, they said, can you have it to us by Friday? And that was just an unreasonable goal to have 34 property owners by Friday, although there had been consultation with multiple property owners, at least five of the property owners on that are part of this. One of them is here today that said, but they didn't say any, what type of documentation they need, what type of certification as far as research. I said, what else is needed? What forms? What property information do you need? What historic research? Cause they probably already have it. What would you like? And administration didn't respond to giving me a template to fill in the blanks per property and then, and then here's what I would do. It was a notarized signature, is it just a signature? And so there was not any clear edit from administration other than, can you have it to us by Friday? I had submitted the thing in sep, the documentation and everything in September and administration sat on it for six weeks before turning it over to landmarks and then said, oh, we only have two more weeks to act on it. You've had it for six weeks in a digital and a hard copy form. And so when I look at things and I, I come to administration with ideas, I've gone to the last two administrations for Kimball Junction. It says I-80 east to Cheyenne or I-80 west to Salt Lake. And there's plenty of room on those big signs to say I-84 that we can get to Ogden. So 24 years I've approached administrations, the past two administrations to say, what can we do to get people to Ogden? And we had a beautiful presentation about visit Ogden, but no signage. You, you literally, when you came to Kimball Junction, you'd stop and it said right to Ogden or Cheyenne, left to Salt Lake. And now that whole interstate quagmire up there. So I'm, the same process has happened to me with this in the sense that I've done tremendous amount of research, thousands of hours of research and had, had one phone call that requested permission for, or permissions from the property owners by Friday. And in order to get permission from the US Forest Service, that's a pretty lengthy process also. So I wouldn't, that would not be a practical thing and yet it's on the national register. And so when I brought different approaches to administration for this, I, I have had minimal communication and contact. And so that's the part that's, that's been the frustration.
Any other questions for Travis regarding council member higher?
Yeah, I, I the reason I said three minutes, cause I, I think you could talk for a long time about this, but my question is, as I, i- if I were one of the property owners in this, it, and you came to my, my door and said, this is what we're considering. This is what, why it would benefit you. What are you going to tell me? How are you going to tell me? Well, I mean, since what Barton said, it's, it's heavy on the stick and light on the carrot. Why would I want to do that?
Well, the, the general plan and then the previous parts of the Jefferson Avenue, even historic district is the general plan says expand the Jefferson Avenue Historic District. And it's, it goes northward and I simply just went westward. Since the general plan has existed since 1998, we've not done anything towards that. And so here I come in as a citizen, seeing some ideas in the general plan. And here's some wonderful aspects of preservation because cultural heritage tourism that will, that will drive the revenue stream, the actual proximity of a residential district that close to downtown is going to get the tourism that come to either the amphitheater or now the new art, Dunky Art Plaza. They walk another half block, full block eastward and wow, here's this preserved historic district of residential qualities similar to, better than the avenues actually than in Salt Lake because of the proximity to downtown too.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
I just have a question for Barton, just to follow up on that. So what is the consent process? What does that look like? What would Travis have needed to provide to get consent from those property owners?
Well, the, just whatever he wanted to present that to make his case for it, that the Landmarks Commission would have been comfortable with that the property owners consented to it. So a signature from a petition.
Or, I was going to say, I mean, he can make a list of all the property owners and how would we verify that they actually had consented, I guess, too. So signatures.
Yeah. So the, the official process is anyone can can apply. So the ordinance doesn't require consent. It's just been the city's policy that we have consent. So we could create an ordinance and that specifies exactly what that is required, but.
Man, I think that's what he's asking. He's not sure what.
Wasn't an ordinance. I was just simply asking for a template and said, what is needed? And I never got any answer back. So.
Okay. So it sounds like we have, we have a couple of ideas or options. I think as we're all kind of a little bit contemplative on this. Of course, there's the no action. There's a hearing, have a public hearing to either deny or approve or create the historic district or then or potentially send it back to landmarks with proper time and resources to do additional researcher or or preparation for that. So.
I'm getting all up questioning.
Oh, that's okay. Yeah.
I think I overheard somebody say that there's another overlapping district that we're going to discuss next week.
Yes.
And how does that relate to this one?
I, so Mr. Pate had filled out the application materials. This, the actual petitioner is Alan Toon. So it's a like I said, an overlapping area. It's just Mr. Toon wanted to file the same sort of application. And so it's the same sort of process went through that the Landmarks Commission had recommended not approving that for the same reasons. So, but Jill, consider that next.
We'll hear about that next week.
Yeah. So maybe I'll just ask the petition. So is that replacing this one or is it?
My, it, it would, it would, it would overlap and it'd be inclusive to this, Mr. Toon's petition from, from what, when he and I spoke about that. So it would, it would encompass this. And so if his is approved, then this is, doesn't need to be approved in the sense because it then it covers the overlapping properties.
Yeah, it looks like it covers about 75% of the, the area with my rough math, yeah, estimate.
And so if I, if I could just ask one thing, I, I'm also willing to just sit down with council staff and say, here's a, here's my side of things and here's, here's a plan where, where things could possibly be improved. And then if it could be sent back to landmarks, I'm asking simply for equal protection. We spent $500,000 to buy 26th and Adams and tear it down. So we put $400,000 to purchase it and $100,000 to tear it down, even though it had been nominated as a single property. It was a city-owned property and it'd been nominated by the Weber County Heritage Foundation. It wasn't even heard and the demolition was preceded. So the wrecking ball beat the petition. And, and yet the petition was turned in. And so they actually had rearranged the dynamics of tearing down that property prior to hearing the petition. And so when Weber County Heritage Foundation and other notable organizations attempt to come forward, then it's what, what's the, what's the point for, for, for the preservation? So I would say I'm happy to sit down with council staff and say, what, how can we fine tune this? So that would be an option that I'd weigh in there and, and say that because I believe there's too much meat, meat and potatoes to this. For the founders of Ogden, Fred Kiesel, obviously the second, owner of the large, second largest winery in Utah, in California when he died. Percival Barrett, the founder of the Utah National Guard, all the property owners right on that block. So I'm, I'm saying I'm happy to work with council also prior to it, then going back. So it can be fine tuned and, and better polished if that's what's requested of administration.
I think, I think with that also would be interesting to learn more about the Landmarks Commission's five-year plan and like how that these properties maybe play into that as well. And I, council member higher had a question or.
Well, I, I, it's kind of a question suggestion, I think, and maybe it will work, maybe it won't, but looking at your flow chart, it showed that one of the, one of the options that the council could do is kick it back to the, to the landmarks. And it sounds like Mr. Pate was, the timeline was a problem for, for what you were asked to do, plus, plus positive direction, you know, specific direction. Maybe that's what we do is we, we just send it back and, and give him some more opportunity and direction to, to provide whatever it is. But, but I'll tell you what, Travis, I, I think if it were a, a great idea, you ought to be able to convince somebody that lives in there to make that petition.
And I can make the petition. It was just, can you have it by Friday? That was just kind of an unreasonable request. And so if, if it's just a matter of saying, here's what we'd like. And if you can just show the, the relevance to, and the, and the buy-in, I'm happy to do that. The buy-in for the East Central Community Plan was only a 13% for East Central National District.
What, what it started ends up being if, if, which we don't make these kinds of decisions in a work session, but it kind of is sort of a, an extension that you could, that, that could be used. I, I, I think that's a reasonable approach. I think that gives you the direction and the time you need to do something. Landmarks could then revisit it. Cause apparently they, they just didn't like the, the zero to 34, you know? And if you can resolve that issue, maybe, maybe we've solved some of the problems. So I, I, that's, that's what I would feel comfortable in, unless you think that there's some reason that that shouldn't be done or couldn't be done or ought not be done.
Yeah. So I mean, if, yeah, if we had 34 property owners and it still takes some research, you know, it is a time and research, but you know, the, the property owner consent was a was a really a nonstarter.
I guess I'm curious why, and this is a question to Travis, why do you include the, the properties that are already in a historic district?
It was originally just recording Block 16 because the notable, notable aspect and overlap. So Block 16 was the H M H Spencer, who is a past mayor of Ogden, builder of the Echo West Ward. And then his home was, his home was adjacent. Once he moved and retired, didn't move to his daughter's home on 25th Street. So I think the overlap was the, the significance of the actual Myron Wallace Butler owned property, which is Block 16.
Right. I'm just saying that those other properties are already in the historic district. And so I don't know if I would count them in the same way as the ones that aren't yet in a historic.
Yeah. So the original research and that could have been the fine tuning that could have come from administration saying and, 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 and didn't. So, so I can do that.
Side of the Jefferson.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Okay. We got, we'll, we'll discuss that further and, and have some have some direction. And I think part of that is going to come from what we hear next week as well with the other petitions. So.
And then the one thing that I added was just the, the introduction to the general plan, which is the city's policy, which talks about the citizen involvement and it says anyone. So, okay. So that's the dynamic that is the, the actual written policy. When the policy which Mr. Bryerley referred to is not written, Landmarks Commissioner Mitchell said, is there a policy? He said, no, I, there's not a policy. I've seen it referred to. But the actual policy, if that was a policy in the eighties, this was adopted in 1988, 98. So this is the policy. It's not something that doesn't exist and might be found in reference. The actual official adopted policy is 1998 with the general plan. So, okay. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Travis. Up next, we have the short-term rental ordinance or amendments presented by Barton. This is the second time we're looking at this. So I think you've got some answers to the questions we had last week and hopefully we've all had a little bit more time to think about it and what we, yeah. Yeah. Have a productive conversation on this.
At least hopefully I can give you some additional information. So just to remind you where we are. So the current short-term rental ordinance, short-term rentals are allowed in single-family zones if it's an owner occupied property. So a an owner who wants to rent out a room while they're there could do that, or if they're they go somewhere for winter and want to rent it out for a couple of months in the winter, they could do that, but it has to be owner occupied. In multiple family zones is allowed one per block. They're prohibited downtown and there is licensing requirement. So sort of the big picture of why this is coming to you is, is this, that for some in a residential zone, you have your house, this is my home. This is where I live. This is, I know my neighbors, I, my kids go to school, my kids play with the neighbors. I barbecue in the backyard, you know, this is the place where I live. And then you might have a neighbor who, for them, this is their business. They purchased a property and they, they rented out, they make money. That's the purpose of the having it. And so the big question is if there's conflict between those two, who wins? You know, who bears the burden of it? And you know, are we leaning in favor of the resident who's lives there or are we leaning in favor of the person who wants to run the business there? And we'd propose that we ought to favor the person who lives there. And this is the, the fundamental reason why we're bringing these amendments to you. So that when there are conflicts, that we have teeth in an ordinance that we can enforce that if a neighbor's saying, hey, I'm having these problems, we can go out, we can address the problems with an ordinance. And, and move forward there leaning towards favoring the, the homeowner. Now, you may not feel that way. You might want to just favor the person who wants to operate as a business and that's, that's your prerogative of council. The is, the problems we have, we talked about this, parking is the top complaint we get. You know, what's the problem with my neighbor having a short-term rental? Well, they their tenants, they part, they, they, we have one where the two share a driveway and you know, they're operating short-term rental and they the guests come and they block the driveway and they address it with that tenant, but that tenant's gone. And then, you know, it's some guest, new guest all the time. We did have a case where there's a they just have a big party there and you get there and there's lots of cars in the street and and the neighbor complains about those things.
So can you define a lot? The number one, you said it's the number one complaint.
It's the number one complaint.
Is that five? Is it 10?
And I would, you know, I don't, you know, I don't want to oversell it because we do not get dozens of complaints about dozens of properties. We get dozens of plates about a handful of properties. It's, it's not, yes.
So can, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Sorry. If, I just want some help on the parking is an issue. In my mind, I would think, I mean, I'm, I figure I, I rent houses all the time. I take my family, but it's one car or it's two cars and we pull in and we take the driveway and that's it. So I don't understand. So I don't understand. I, I mean, maybe it's big groups renting one house and, and doing that. Is the parking an issue because the person that owns the home is leaving their vehicles already there? Not allowing or not, or limiting the, the, the available parking spaces for the people that will be renting the home? Is that the problem? Or are people bringing five and six, seven, 12 cars when they rent this place?
There's at least one case where the, yeah, they are, they were inviting guests. They were having parties over there. And there were six, seven, eight cars on the street. You know, and I don't want to oversell it. It's not like this happens a lot, but it does happen. And we just don't have the tools, but when it happens to address it.
I appreciate, I was just gonna follow up. So I appreciate your kind of opening statement about who has favor, you know, who we favor. I do appreciate that. My, one of my issues is the street is public property. No one has a say over who parks wherever they park. And I mean, I think I keep bringing this up in all different conversations. So for me, that's one of the biggest challenges is people can park in front of your house. Like you have no ownership of the street. That's public space. Anyone can park there. I could have 20 cars and take up all the space. No one could do anything about that. As long as I move them every 48 hours or whatever. Right? So that's a part that's just a huge problem for me that there's some issue with people using the street. And so that part, although I can see why it might be a challenge for people that there's so many extra cars in the neighborhood. I mean, we have the ability to have as many cars as we want to have individually. I'm parking them on a street. No one can stop me as long as I'm following that 48 hour rule. Right? So.
Yeah. And honestly, it's just a matter of it makes people uncomfortable. It's, I wouldn't say, you know, they're blocking it or it's, it's making it so they can't park anywhere. I, it just makes people uncomfortable.
Council member higher had a comment as well.
I, I appreciate your, your belief on this thing. I, I, I don't know how we were, we could say, well, you can park on the street, but you can't. You know, that's, that's going to be difficult, but, but this is, well, to your point, uh, when my family goes to one of these short-term rentals, we go with a lot of cars. Cause there's a lot of rooms and there's a lot of people and they have a lot of cars. And, and so my question may be Barton, is, is that the only problem that violates these, uh, short-term rentals? Or, or are they, I guess what I'm asking, are they completely illegal other than that?
Um, you know, that's the number one complaint. The other complaints are that, uh, people are, they're supposed to be owner occupied, but they're not. I mean, that's.
Well, that's, that was my issue at the, at the very offset. If it's owner occupied, our definition of owner occupancy is that they're there sometime of the year. But the other days they can rent this thing out. Well, the reason it works because it's owner occupied is because the owner is there and can shut those guys up if they're a nuisance. It doesn't work if they're in St. George.
Yes.
So I don't know why this is a, I don't know why we allowed this. This seems goofy to me. That we said, yeah, it's got to be owner occupied, but we don't care if the owner's there or not. That, that seems to be a, a bit of a discrepancy to my way of thinking.
A regular rental house though, that, how long is that? 30 days?
30 days. Yeah. That is, is a.
So you could change out renters every 30 days and have a similar issue.
You know, I, I do have some knowledge of people down in, in Provo area. They have a short-term rental that you must rent for 30 days at a time.
Yeah.
And they get enough money out of their thing, out of their, their rental, uh, to where people don't mind spending three or four days, but spending the 30-day money. I think that's a little bit of an issue. I think it seems like a problem. That's where I, I, I come to the, you know, short-term rentals do, uh, water down the fabric of a neighborhood. I think we agree that, that it does. But there are some upsides to short-term rentals. But if, if parking is the only issue, um, and I don't believe it is, that's why I asked the question. I, I.
Yeah, I'd say parties, parties and noise.
Probably making a lot of noise. They're probably doing a lot of other things. And it was the last straw was the parking thing.
Yeah. Well, I, and I think it's.
People getting mad at the cars in front of their house.
Yeah. Yes. It's very uncomfortable. And I think it's just the most visible thing that people can put their finger on that. That's.
Yeah. Oh, we got the expert. We got, yeah, let's, let's bring up here.
And I, I think if it's okay, we'll have Adam come up to, um, Adam is very proficient in the business, uh, license enforcement area, which does, um, you know, support the economy and everything else. It provides that opportunity for, uh, for those guests to come into, uh, properties, to be able to have their families all under, um, their family guests all under one property. They would rather do that instead of hotels. Um, that is understandable. So what it is, is when we're talking about all those vehicles, um, you get, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you the story about a little home that has 17 cars parked out there. Now those 17 cars park in front of mailboxes. They park in front of fire hydrants. They park going in the wrong direction. That's only one little direction of it. Then that night turns into noise ordinance complaints, turns into police complaints. And it continues, continues, continues. And with our current in, our current code, it does not allow us to have any teeth, to be able to do anything to help educate the property owner. And then turn that into enforcement if we need to. We would much rather gain compliance through communication than we would enforcement. But if you don't have a rule, you can't do anything to stop it. And then you have an infuriated neighbor, which Barton and I had a wonderful opportunity to speak to him over this last weekend. And he actually said to us that he would actually support us with this because we kept our promise and directed this ordinance into the enforcement if we have to have it. And that, that is, that's a good ordinance. You, hopefully you never have to use it, but if you do, you've got it. And Adam was the investigator with this particular, uh, property that was up there. And, and I would dare say that Adam spent 30, 40 hours, in particular, fielding the complaints. Every time this individual rented their property, we continually had complaints on it. So do you have anything you would like to share on it, Adam?
Sure. Um, Adam, uh, Code Services, Adam Nelson, Code Services Supervisor. Um, we have had the one that Chris is speaking about, we have had, uh, not just one neighbor. It's been multiple neighbors that's complained about this property. And I have others as well. They typically come to me, so I tend to get the complaints first. Uh, parking is a big one. Um, like we're saying, Chris is exaggerating when he said there was 17 cars. So this thing went around the block. It was unreal. And I think that's one thing that, uh, written into the new ordinance would be a big help would be, uh, speaking of the events, that would be wonderful. That, so that, that in itself is going to help eliminate some of the parking. Um, but they, it just gets very congested. They're not familiar with the surroundings. Um, we've had cars backed into garbage cans, backed into mailboxes, taken down fences. I'm always dealing with those kinds of complaints on these. Um, but, uh, parking is definitely, uh, the forefront of the complaints I get. I do get others, but that is definitely number one.
Just, just for clarity, does the person that you're referring to this short-term rental, do they have a license?
Yes.
Yes.
Right. They're allowed to do. Okay. Well, I just think to me, the issue seems more of, I would rather work on an ordinance that once there's so many complaints or once they get a complaint or once something happens to happen, then we can hold that license or, or, but, but. But yeah, I, 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 I don't know if this is the right one.
This, this actually does it. Um, it's, it, I've proven it in another jurisdiction. Um, taken it all the way through the court system, took in it, uh, taken it through the appeals process. And it was very successful in ridding a problem property that was 10,000 square feet that had multiple parties. Um, eventually had a shooting at, uh, multiple fireworks complaints, multiple, uh, there was a nude photo shoot, uh, that took care of these properties. And I was able to take those through the system and get those taken care of.
Chair, if I can throw in a couple of things that I, um, this deciding that there's too many cars parked there seems about as difficult to enforce as, uh, the definition of a family. You know, are you going to go, I'm going to decide how many cars that group of people have? I, I don't know how you know unless they're all from out of state or, or something like that. And even then you, you're gonna, you're gonna have to just connect dots. Um, so I, I, I just don't know how you do that. And then they say, well, you can park here, here on the street, but your people can't. How do you, how do you do that? I don't get how you get to that.
And I wonder, and I just have kind of a follow-up too. And I'm, I'm not trying to say that I want people to be troubled by these properties. I'm just more on the side of how can we give a carrot to the people that are trying to follow the rules? If we have 350 properties like this that we know in the city and we have X amount that are having a problem. I don't want to address like everybody with the one or two problem areas. But I was curious, I mean, I guess we've talked a little bit about our noise ordinance, but wouldn't after a certain amount of complaints at one property, is there an escalation to that? Let's say if you get a noise complaint once, then the second time, third time, wouldn't eventually the owner start getting fees of some sort? Or what happens? I just don't really know what happens at one property.
So using this, uh, um, well, the proposal that's in front of you, um, that would allow us to be able to take the citations up and to the revoc, uh, revocation of a business license. Revocating a business license is very difficult. And, and I think we've all experienced that in, um, in, in, in West Ogden. We, we did experience that and having, having that as your only resource is, is probably not the best plan. Um, but it's, we, we could revoke a business license if they have a business license.
I guess that's what I was wondering. So if a property, if I'm just a regular homeowner and I'm getting a noise complaint every week, it doesn't escalate in any way. It's just every single time I'm getting a ticket or what happens?
Well, yeah, we wouldn't be able to do anything. It, that would become a lawful matter. If, if a private property owner, a resident was doing that type of business, that, that would be up to them. And it would be a law issue. If they're operating a business and doing that, then we can shut down the business using the different techniques and powers in the ordinance.
I was just curious.
No, that's a great question.
Yeah. The proposal would actually provides a 100, 250, $500 fine, um, for a licensed business. If you're not licensed business, it's a 500 fine. So there's actually incentive to get a business license.
Can I ask one more question that, that's plagued me for a long time? Uh, and I really appreciate our code services folks. But you guys clock out at five, right?
That, that is, uh, that is something that we've actually changed this year. Um, we were trying to do some different studies with it to show what the numbers would be. We wanted to show great participation with our farmer's market activities and the different, uh, things that complaints that they brought forward to us. We had officers at those and that was a great success to be able to help them. Along with that, we also had officers out in the area and it was a proven success to be able to have those officers enforcing the ordinances in Ogden City that, uh, most of the time the city's trained. They're, they're going to park in the front yards on Saturdays and Sundays and they're, they're going to do the different stuff. But it's, it's really not a, a target of ours. We, we want to educate.
Well, I, that's kind of my, I, and I, like I said, I really do appreciate code services folks. Um, however, there's a lot of different kinds of, uh, nuisance complaints. OPD isn't going to do that.
Correct.
Or if they even do, they, they're going to get to it in six hours after the problem's not a problem anymore. And so we've got to, if we're going to have ordinances that need to be enforced by code services, we need to have code services available for enforcement. And you know, I, I, maybe that's getting more people. Maybe that's dividing up the, the workforce, you know, into different shifts. I don't know how you're going to do it.
So during the, during the summer times and, and those warmer, those warmer hours or warmer seasons, right? Uh, we do extend the hours and it's actually worked out great for one of our employees that, that looks to be able to work at different hours, uh, to be able to make his family, uh, schedule work. Um, so that's 7:30, 8 o'clock timeframe. Again, that takes us to a safety thing. I hate to put one person available, um, out on the street without having law enforcement, at least at the ready. Um, it is a, code enforcement is, uh, it's a very, um, intriguing thing. And, and I'm, I worry every day about their safety. And, uh, you know, just like Jared worried when it, when it was over him and he, you know, it, it's burdening. But I do believe we have a good plan in place and all of you would be very proud of the services that, that that department, uh, is able to provide to the many different problems. And if you were to only be able to hear of some of the stories that, that take place there. And this is just one of those things that we were able to be able to have the foresight to be able to say, this ordinance is a proven ordinance. We've already, we've already been able to share the different, different things in it, the, and examples that would provide its success. So.
How, how does the fines get levied if, if they do? I mean, if you've got a, uh, a, a violation and you guys say, okay, well, that's a hundred and $25. Well, that's, that's the first one. Well, it's going to the owner of the property.
It is.
Um, I, I'm just trying to think of how it works, you know? And then the second one's 250 and then the third one's 500. And I guess they're 500 every, every day, every time after that.
Yes. And, and technically if they continue to operate their business, it's $500 a day, um, which we'd be able to take to our legal team, uh, to be able to make that happen. Um, obviously it, it, once again, it's, it's their property. Um, so there's only so much you can do on that aspect, but them operating a business, you're evoking their business license. Then you've got other, you've got other avenues that you can go to.
Yeah. It seems like it, it, it is their responsibility to make sure the ordinances are maintained.
You are correct. Yes. Thank you.
So anyway.
It's their business. So they need to maintain it just like a normal business. Barton and parking on a, on a, on a property, really in a short-term rental is no different than a, a home. When you approve a home to get it, um, for parking, it, it's really no different than it is in a short-term rental too. They're not going to say, okay, you can have four people stay here, but two of them can park out in the street. So a lot of times when, when, uh, they have the, uh, the parking allowance, when we do the license, they say, okay, you need to park on the property because that's the legally allowed parking anyway. So I don't think we're, we're just not, um, encouraging parking in the street really. And I think this ordinance would really help. Hey, you know, you need to have on-street parking because that's what the house was designed for. Off-street parking is kind of a luxury and nice to have when you need it. But if you're going to be running a business, you really need to have that contained is what we've seen. Yeah. And you asked us what the, the options are and came up with two other options. One, you mentioned, just require the property owner to be present. So they, they are the enforcement officer there, um, or don't allow them. Just say he can't do short-term rentals. Those were a couple of other options other than what we're proposing on parking.
Is that an option?
Yeah. Yeah. You don't have to allow short-term rentals. You can just say no.
I, I think, uh, I think, um, I, I know that, uh, I classify if it's okay that I speak right now. I know that Sarah, who I claim to be a professional in her market, she would actually not, uh, she would not agree, um, that it's okay to ban short-term rentals. I know that they are, they are very good for a community if, if, if they're managed correctly.
Yeah.
And you've been given an article that would help manage it correctly.
I think with that, and, and thank you for introducing that. I, I did ask if Sarah could hang around for a minute, just in this discussion, just to bring that professional perspective on this ordinance and how it might be, uh, viewed by the, that world. I don't know if that's okay to ask you to come up and just share a little bit, but.
Before.
Or before.
Yeah. Can I, can I, I would just need to understand what you were saying about parking. So we already have an ordinance that says you're supposed to park in your driveway and that you can only have two cars on the, what, what?
Correct. And basically I think is what this does is it just encourages them and educates them, hey, you need to park on the driveway. Just lets them know that's where the parking.
So we already have an ordinance that says that.
Correct. But out of town, you may not know that. Um, but this is to educate the people from out of town.
Out of town, I don't know that. I, I have never heard that.
Yeah. Well. Yeah, well. Yeah, I'm, I think where I.
As a property owner, I'm supposed to only park on my driveway?
When the housing is approved, like uh when you have, when you have the housing approved. And that's what I, my thought is, I think it's taking it more towards uh, uh, this is a new house, this is a new business. Well, just my. So, yeah, the, you're required to have parking spaces. Yes. Them.
But you're not required.
Exactly. Under the current ordinance, you're not required to. To park there, but you're required to have.
Okay, that makes.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, let's invite Sarah up to just provide some perspective from the. Yeah.
I appreciate what um Chris was saying. To Barton's point, there is nothing in state law that says you have to allow or. Short term rentals anywhere. So you have the ability as a community. To restrict or disallow them in zones or places or throughout the entire municipality if you choose to. But Chris is absolutely right, that I would argue all day that that is not in the best interests of the community that. Figuring out solutions to manage um the few cases of problem incidences that we have. Is what we want to do so that we create um lodging opportunities that are available for all types of. People who visit our community, knowing too that a lot of times it's families coming to visit someone who already lives here or whatnot and there. Is various um lodging needs that are available for each type of visitor. Um, I think as we've seen this transpire across the state and with all the various state legislation that's been. Proposed, but none of which has actually made it through the legislative session yet. Um, we can see, I mean, it's obviously a tricky issue, but. What everyone's trying to do is find ways to reward the good players and make sure we take the bad players out of the market.
Hey, thank you. Anything else, Barton on?
Uh, just, you know, the other thing you talked about was the, how do you? Know that it's an owner occupied rental. Um, the current code requires the owner to live onsite for eight months out of the year. And we have found that is impossible to enforce unless you're there every single day. Checking on, making sure they're there. So the proposed rules would. Require, would up the requirements that you have three pieces of evidence instead of two. Um, but as. Long as you provide that, that documentation, we would take your word that you actually do live there and you. You would have to renew that every year. Um, some other options. You know, we could just require that the owner be present when you're renting it and that's the easiest way to enforce. You knock upon the door. Is the owner here? They're not? Oh, that's, then that's a violation. Again, another option is simply just not allow them. Or you could go the other way and say, just take off the owner occupied and say. You can do them whether they're owner occupied or not. So those were the other options that we came.
Councilmember Blair has. I just, so do we review the business license for short term rentals every year?
Yeah.
Do we give any weight to? You had seven complaints or twenty-eight complaints last year and and not renewing that license?
We don't really have the teeth to say no.
Yeah, how can we change that?
Please, please. Yes, you could.
We could very easily in this. Um, it does give us, it does give us the opportunity. And it makes it easier to revoke that business license. So after they file an appeal and it does go to the mayor for him to make a decision, whether he repeals their business license or not. It's right in front of him, it's black and white, and he can repeal it.
Remind me what happens to a person that gets caught having one of these um establishments without a license?
And it's a five hundred dollar fine.
And we have like the two pieces of evidence, is that weird?
So are you talking about somebody operating a short term rental without having?
Without a license. If our threat is to take away the license, we take it away and then they're still doing the activity. What's the repercussion we have?
So there at some point, you can force them into the court system and have the judge tell them. This is what's allowed. And you're not doing it. Then, I mean, it, it does, it does take that because now you're actually affecting their pocketbook. Cause they're not gonna be making five hundred dollars a night per rental. But they might be making over a hundred and twenty-five. They might be making over two hundred and fifty, but they're not gonna be making over five hundred dollars a night.
Point of clarification, Chris, that's if we pass the proposed rule, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Otherwise, there's no teeth at all.
Correct.
There's no. Well, I mean, we could cite it under the current ordinance for operating without a license.
Just takes a lot more and a lot more evidence to be provided and more difficult to revoke a business license. Um, as they file an appeal that would go to the mayor. To make that. And if they're not having a business license anyway, then it doesn't.
That's what I'm saying is it's like, no, it's getting off their back. I just want more people to get licensed.
We do, yes, yeah.
And and that is to provide that education. I mean, that is, that is the great thing about the business licensing, a program that we are developing new every day. Um, with the system that we have, it, it's providing that education. And it makes it fair for one, just like it does the other.
Are they taxed at a higher rate?
I don't believe so.
So if we made them do primary, then it would be taxed higher. Lower secondary. So we're actually reverse incentivizing ourselves on this one.
It's a home ba- base business that you're giving somebody the opportunity to do what they want for their pro- their private property. We're providing them resources.
Well, if we require them to have this as their primary residence, then we're not getting the tax. Amount that we could get.
Yeah, that's true. Okay.
We're doing a reverse incentive.
And and can you explain to me the difference between two pieces of evidence and three?
So the.
Yeah.
We, the evidence, we would accept your driver's license, your passport, your. I guess your passport doesn't have your dress on, but uh, uh, utility bill, your voter registration, any state ID. Um, the county records and it's just providing one more of those. It's currently we require two of those, we would require three that show that that's your primary residence. So same.
May- maybe. Maybe not something like personal identification, but. Having some sort of personal identification and the utility bill or something where it's just two different, I mean, I don't know. It just seems like three, it just.
So Janine, the next steps on this would be, we have this tentatively scheduled for the agenda to look at. Is it next week or?
So the second, April second.
April second.
Yeah, unless the council feels like you want to have more conversation about it, we are tentatively looking at April second for a. Consideration.
Okay. So I still see a lot of thoughtful thoughts, thoughtful thoughtfulness.
Do one question to Barton again. Is there any ordinance that covers? Short term rentals that are not owner occupied? Or is it required that they all be owner occupied?
Yes, you, you can have ones that are not owner occupied if it's a multifamily zone. And a single family zone has to be owner occupied. Multifamily, you can have non-owner occupied, one per block.
So does this have any of these proposed rules? Do they have any, they don't have any effect on the, on the non-owner occupied or on non-owner? Occupied short term rental.
Uh, they do. Yeah, the general rules about parking would all apply to it. Um, no visitors onsite, those would all apply.
Under the same proposed rule?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, guess there's maybe some more discussion on this or we'll, uh, we'll reach out.
Definitely, I mean, I'm gonna do some more outreach to people I know that do have these properties, cause I think that's also a perspective I would like to understand. Um, I just have, I mean, I've told you about a lot of my challenges, but I also have challenges because we don't hold rental properties. To this, you know, just regular rental properties. So I feel like it's a property rights issue in a cer- to a certain extent as well where. We're sort of picking and choosing what kind of behaviors can happen based on that, but there's not as much oversight if you just run out your house for thirty days.
Yeah.
I don't know. That's why I was kind of asking to like, what are the general rules about? Different challenges that people have in the neighborhood because those should apply to all properties the same way.
Right. Right, for sure. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, we have a. Uh, we have next on our agenda, the administrative, an administrative update, Mayor Brown, our C A O. Also with us, uh, Mayor Nedolski's here and uh, Justin Anderson. Now's your chance to grab a bite to eat, maybe.
Thanks, you guys. Appreciate the uh, opportunity for the update and thanks to the team for, that's a good conversation. Really healthy conversation, actually. So, uh. I think the last time I updated you guys, we were mid legislative session. I was running frantic from to here, from here, everywhere. If you ask Cindy, my calendar definitely is stabilizing now, now that the session ended. Didn't help that my wife went to Boise for ten days. So I am single dad at home with the two girls and running them at every sporting event and everything, but. Terms of the mayoral calendar, it's looking a lot better. Um, so. We've talked as an administration and want to make sure that we're a lot more communicative for you guys. Just want you to know, I recognize that that's something I personally struggled with, especially at the outset of my, of my term. Um, with the legislative session firing on all cylinders. I think the session takes as much as half of our time during a work week. If not more, so it's, it's hard to do everything else, especially when you're brand new. But anyway. That's my way of admitting that I haven't been um as available as maybe I need to be, so. Also an opportunity to just encourage anybody, if you have concerns or questions that you want to talk to me about directly. I'm happy to, I'll take any phone call from any one of you, happy to go out to lunch with any one of you or any non-quorum number of you. Will be in open book as much as we possibly can. So, and I know that we've. Coordinated some standing times for um pressing issues each week that if something comes up, we've got a. A standing slot each week to, to prioritize and make sure that we're coordinating with your staff and with your leadership, but. Um, one of the things that is really exciting that I just wanted to, to mention that. Um, not sure if anybody's hearing about it, but the Olympics is a thing, it's coming. Um, it's kind of fun that. It's easy to think about how far out in the future that is, but in. Mayor had a funny joke today. When you talk about government time, it's like geologic time sometimes, but. When you're talking about preparing for an event of that nature and that scale, it's uh, ten years is not that far out, so. Um, I have been invited to participate in some committees for planning and preparing. There are committees that are just of um host city mayors or um. Kind of planning what you, we each want our local approach to be. What do we want our local priorities to be and, and what do we want the? The issues and priorities to emphasize during the games to make sure that we set ourselves up for, um, for after the games as well. And that's something that we are really well prepared to do. I met with the new executive director of the Gold Foundation recently. Um, uh, they're actually really excited about that opportunity that builds right on their legacy. That's. It taps right into the existence of the organization and um picks up where really that organization left off. Last time, so they're, they're excited as a board to talk about. Being that convening organization to bring community together, to identify what we want our priorities to be. Um, and to make sure that those priorities fit for us during the games, but even more importantly after the games, to make sure that we're a community that. That builds on the opportunity instead of building. Venues that are too big for our community and that don't fit our needs in the future. So, and that's a discussion that's happening. Around curling where there's new requirements for um by the international organizations to meet massive. Uh, crowd requirements. Uh, those are things that weren't required in the past. And so um, the organizing groups are having to look at the venues and make sure they're meeting the new, new requirements. And we want to make sure that we are right sized, that we're not building those facilities. For a size that doesn't fit our community's needs in the long term and, and kind of wasting money, but. We also want to make sure that we're activating our community every day during the games, not just when there's an event. So um, we positioned ourselves, I think it was. Sarah mentioned that no community is more collaborative and inviting, so that's the position that we're taking. Is we want to be the city that the, that the organizers and that um, that the game see as a welcoming community. A community that's uh got the partnerships in place to build on the legacy to make sure that we. Are top of mind when they think about all of the events, the concerts, the um hosting uh different delegations, et cetera. We want to have all of those opportunities available to us, so. The games could be a lot more for our city than just a single event. And certainly Snow Basin being one of the main venues for multiple events. Um, we want to make sure that we're a community that captures that excitement that's on the hill. Um, down here in this city, instead of having it go from Salt Lake to the, to the mountain and back. We want to be an active community, kind of the Olympics north. Um, where rather than everything being centered in Salt Lake City. So anyway, those are conversations that are taking place. Certainly we have time. But those are some of the requests that are coming from the organizers is we want local communities dictating what their priorities are. And um, helping to organize what, what contributions they can make moving forward. Okay. Um, I know you guys had specific questions, including uh an update on snow plowing, so we've got Justin Anderson to help with that.
Yeah, so concerning snow plowing, um, I, I heard that you had questions on with the new ordinance being implemented. Um, I can give you some statistics here. So we've had a hundred and ninety-seven calls. Since the, the new snowplow ordinance was implemented, seventeen of those were to request exemptions. Um, thirty complaints about plowing curb to curb, twenty complaints about access to mailboxes and blocking driveways. A hundred and sixteen complaints about needing a plow truck in the area that was mostly on dead ends and cul-de-sacs, which we plow. Typically last. And then we've had eleven complaints of neighbors parking in the road. Of the seventeen homes requesting exemptions, we've, nine were approved, eight were denied as they had driveways. And then concerning enforcement, we've uh had two hundred and fifty warning notices delivered. By code enforcement, but they've all been warning notices concerning the parking ordinance.
It's hard to know. I mean, we've had a few storms, but of the warning notices, the next time the guys were out, did they notice that they? Those were effective? I don't know if that's a fair question to ask. It's just because there haven't been that many storms.
Yeah, there, there hasn't been a ton of storms and so I, I don't know if I could answer that.
And did you say that's cumulative? So since the ordinance was put, was put in place?
Correct.
Kind of, kind of a, a seasoned end summary, maybe depending on what mother nature does, but.
Yeah, we can, we can only hope that as far as down here, it can snow more up in the mountains, but here we'd like to have it end and start in the spring.
Any other questions for Justin? He's here and otherwise we'll let him go. Anything else? Thank you. I did want to actually uh just talk a little bit of specifics about a letter that you all received um regarding. A request to rename the rodeo facility and just give you a little information on that, so. That would be, um, I don't know the exact name, but um for the, for the Echols. Um, recognizing an upcoming donation that they'll be making to that. So I thought I would just give a little bit of an overview of what, what could happen there, so. Um, we're open to this possibility for the administration as well, so if um. If there was a collaborative interest in moving forward with that. So we do have a city code, it's um the, the most recent facility that I can. Remember, so the same process that we went through was um naming the art plaza after the Dumkey, uh Dumkey. Family, which was a proposal that came on behalf of the foundation, but the, under our code, the. Particular uh factor that, that we're looking for, um, that would apply here would be. An extraordinary civic contribution to the community. And so we would go back to um, ask um. The um, the letter came from um Alan Hall kind of on behalf. to, um, ask, um, the, um, the letter came from, um, Alan Hall, kind of on behalf of the Pioneer Foundation. We would go back to Mr. Hall and ask him for some information that would support, you know, that could possibly support that factor of extraordinary civic contribution. And then we could bring that back to the council and the process would be a joint resolution, uh, that, that would kind of recognize those factors. And then, um, it would, it would basically approve, you know, in light of, of that, that significant contribution. And then in light of the, um, we, we kind of look at, uh, you know, kind of, and also the, the contribution that they, you know, be proposing to make for the rodee grounds. If that's approved, then the next step is, um, also as part of the city code, and that's, um, 718-dash, dash, one, um, is the administration would put together what they call a sponsorship naming agreement, is that's kind of the next step, but it kind of goes through and it, you know, it solidifies that relationship and the approval to, you know, to, to do the naming. So there is a process. And so if we, um, if there's interest in that, we can, we can move forward and then just get that, seek to get additional information on that, on the contributions and.
Any discussion or thoughts on that? We all have that email.
Yeah. Chair, just for having read that letter from Mr. Hall, I, I mean, it kind of stands on its own that Mr. Eccles has been tremendously generous and very involved for a long time and deserves consideration.
I, I agree. And, uh, spoke with Alan Hall this week, and he stated that that probably is just the beginning of further future contributions. So there's no promise of that, but it looks like that's, um, a possibility as well. I support the, I think it's a very positive outlook, too. I'd like to support that as well.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that facility, just a crown jewel, and I, I'm just excited to hear more about what our plans are with the anniversary of that and how we can, you know, Councilmember Blair had some really good ideas, and one of them, including the rodeo clown who's world-class and somehow figuring out a way to include that guy, best in the business. And, and, uh, yeah, they have a, this is their second home, Ogden, yeah.
So, so that's exciting. So we can, we'll, we'll just, we can, we can follow up on that. And, and then, you know, there's even probably more than in that letter, we can gather all that information together and then just come back to you. And it could be in, in the next time, it could be in the form of a, of a transmittal, you know, with a proposal for a joint resolution on that. So we'll keep you posted. Uh,
there was, uh, you know, just some information, just a, just kind of a brief update on, on airport. And I think, uh, everybody knows that they are operating, um, four days a week, uh, which, which is exciting. They're, they're here Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday. And, um, we don't have hard data yet back from them, but just anecdotally, the flights look full, both coming and going. So that's something that, um, you know, we just feel like that's been moving along positive, in a positive way about that. I had one other really exciting item, uh, and that is that March is procurement month. As I was a former Director of Management Services, we can geek out on this, but, um, this is from Governor Cox honoring all public procurement professionals that drives transparency, fairness, and efficiency in the procurement processes with, within respective public organizations. But more importantly, I did want to recognize, um, Ruby, uh, our, uh, our, a, um, she is our purchasing specialist, and she is, um, has just received, uh, a very exciting, um, this is Ruby Puerto Lano, and she has just received a procurement certification from the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing and as a certified procurement professional. This is actually a really exciting, uh, progression for her and her profession. So I just want to acknowledge that publicly, that it was, it's been a couple of year process for her, but she, um, is really, uh, her commitment to lifelong learning in the field of public procurement. So that's exciting. We really just have a, a really professional and, uh, talented and certified, uh, woman at the helm of our procurement office, and she's doing a great job. So I wanted to acknowledge that.
Mayor, can I just add a quick note? Also, I acknowledge that, you know, as evidenced in this morning's directors meeting, Mayor is really stepping up her game around dad jokes. And it started around this one, but it's fun to laugh and it, but it was also, it really is true. Anybody that's been involved in government procurement, it can be, you know, arduous or frustrating or can seem really bureaucratic, but it's also a cornerstone of public trust, um, and transparency. So it, it is fun to joke about, um, especially when Mayor drops the dad jokes like she was this morning. Um, but it's also fun to celebrate the professionalism of our staff that are working on getting the certifications to help ensure that, that we do have that trust and transparency in place.
It's true. And, and since taking this position, and I bet the mayor gets this, and you all might get this too, but I think I get dozens of emails a week from individual companies that are reaching out. And of course, they want to meet and talk about their project. And usually my standard response is, uh, you know, I want to send them a link to our procurement website. Please keep an eye on when we go out to public bid and just give you, give you the website. And that's just kind of how I prefer to handle those rather than really giving, you know, I mean, not that I'm not trying to like, you know, meet with people when they offer, but I do think that that's just the right direction to go in when we're, when we're ready. And, and otherwise I'd probably be filling my entire week with those meetings and have a lot else on my plate. So, but, um, I think that's just the way, you know, we prepare to just keep an eye out for the bids and we'll, they'll be posted. And we do a really excellent job of doing that. Everything's on there on our website and, uh, just, uh, please feel free to respond when you see that.
Mayor, I think I'm getting at least a dozen a week just for rubber gloves. Are you guys getting those too? Trying everything I can not to get those, and they just find a new sender.
So if you get those and you want to get, know how to respond to that, we can, we can help you with that.
Chair, may I make comment? Oh, I don't know if you were finished. I'm sorry, sorry. I was just gonna say how much I appreciate, um, you all reconsidering being involved in the rain barrel program. I'm really sad I can't make the press conference, but I'm really happy that we looked into that and are able to make it possible because I think it's just a really exciting way to help people think about our whole ecosystem and water, everything. So I'm really happy about that. Thank you.
And thank you very much, um, Councilmember Tuberka, because you did bring this, uh, to us this year and, um, just, you know, just boarding to us, uh, you know, a group that had reached out to you. And, um, we, we did, uh, we were participating, um, with the same organization, Utah Rivers Council, um, probably close to a decade ago. Um, it was, it was a different program at the time and, and a lot, I think, has to do really with technology and the improvements in technology as I was thinking about it. Because, um, a decade ago, it, you know, we didn't have all the online registration and, uh, just the way it's sort of been, um, technology has allowed them to, you know, people go online to do it now. There was a virtual kickoff and, uh, it's, it's very strategic where they'll, um, deliver the barrels at a, you know, a set time, people can bring them. But, but in the past 10 years ago, because we really didn't have that technology as much, it was much more staff intensive and the cost was just a little bit higher back then. We're investing, um, $2,800 to subsidize the first 100 barrels, which is coming out of our sustainability account. And then we'll, we'll kind of, kind of have the, um, opinion that we're going to pilot it, see how it goes, see what the interest is. And then we can, you know, maybe up that budget a little bit next year. We're not trying to deplete that budget entirely, but we had it, you know, appropriated for, for something. And we're really focused on, um, um, education, uh, for this. I know that we, we looked at it a little bit more closely in terms of, uh, is there a cost saving for residents to be able to collect and maybe offset some of the water usage that they would otherwise use to, um, you know, do some irrigation or, you know, kind of as a replacement for some amount of secondary water. We looked at that historically. Um, we kind of know we're a dry state, so this gets rolled out in early May. And how much are people, you know, going to be able to collect during that month? But, but really, um, I think we're just, we're not going to examine it from that, that perspective. We're just thinking of it as an educational opportunity, people to kind of get a look at how much water they, you know, might use on a, on a monthly basis when they get their bill. And maybe how much do they have the opportunity to save? And, you know, we encourage people, um, to use it more for, uh, flowers and plantings like that, just in case there's any, uh, you know, corrosion or something that, that maybe to, I don't, I'm not advising people or not, but in the past, we've, um, suggested that you think twice before using it for vegetable gardens and things like that, but kind of other kinds of plantings and lawn waterings. And, and I'm excited, I might actually sign up for it as a personal experiment, see how much I can collect and then use it on the flowers in the front. So see how that goes.
You might have to hurry. I know that they go fast.
It, it's true. It's, it could be, um, even faster than our Twilight concert series, for example.
But I do want to also credit, um, former Councilmember Wicks, because every year she's sent me the information about it and asked us to look into it. So it's actually her that's keeping, continuing and driving it forward. So I did just send her a little message to let her know we've got.
Yeah, thanks for doing that. And I know, I know she'll appreciate that. And, you know, it's just one of those things we, again, it was, it was very, it was a very different thing years ago with, with how much staff, um, resources was required there, but we're excited to, to give it a try again. And so thanks again for bringing it to our attention this year.
I was just going to mention, if there's just, there's a couple of minutes left, but I think you guys are going to get asked about it. Um, our staff is working with Mary's Sliderville staff on, uh, a WACOG proposal that Ken and I will probably see in the subcommittee and also at WACOG. But, um, I've only, I've asked our staff, and I think it was Councilmember Graff that expressed maybe concern about how much we're going to spend on a project in another city. And I asked our staff to be, be cooperative like we are with our, all neighboring cities and to work within the bounds of what's generally appropriate when we do similar projects where we share a boundary. Um, oftentimes it's more of an in-kind contribution. So, um, that's kind of the direction that we're going. And I've asked that Mary's Sliderville staff kind of handle constituent inquiries with their residents, and we'll do the same with ours and with our partners at BDO. And our staff are doing a really good job of keeping in touch with their staff. So.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. All right. We got about three minutes to adjourn and move into the main session.